Let's call this committee, the whole meeting for August 20th, 2024 to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bog.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
And we welcome Alderman Dan Barrero for the first time sitting up here at the City Council with us. We appreciate you, you being involved and look forward to your ceremonial swearing in later this evening. Thanks for being a part of the team, brother. Is there a motion approved, the minutes of August 6, 2024? Motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. I don't see Mr. Mohammed, so I don't believe we have any mayor's report. He's probably preparing for the Dan Barrero's event later this evening. So we will go on to public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, there we go. Moving right along. Let's go on to committee reports. Vice Chair Swada Bay, can you give the Building Zoning Economic Development Committee report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Building zoning and economic development committee met on August 14, 2024, and reviewed the following items. Twenty-four dash zero five eighty-nine, an ordinance changing the name of Adelwood Drive to Adelwood Circle located south of Del Webb Boulevard, east of Bellwether Drive, Inville County, Aurora, Illinois.
Sir.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Thank you. The next item is twenty-four dash zero four eight-five, a resolution approving the final plot for Lincoln Prairie by Del Webb subdivision, Phase Three located at south of Wolf Crossing Road and east of Eola Road.
No action needed.
No action needed.
No action needed. No action needed on the.
The next item is twenty-four dash zero four eight-six, a resolution approving a final plan for Lincoln Prairie by Del Webb subdivision, Phase Three located south of Wolf Crossing Road and east of Eola Road.
No action needed.
No action needed.
Mayor.
Alderman Bog.
Yeah, it's an appealable item. I like a presentation on it.
Ms. Basic, how are you?
I'm great.
Thank you, all right.
Good evening, Tracy Basic, Senior Planner with the Zoning and Planning Division. The subject property is a vacant land, which is part of the Lincoln Prairie Plan Development District. To give you a little background, in 2021, the City Council approved a plenary plan and plat for Lincoln Prairie by Del Webb subdivision. Subsequently, the final plat and final plan for Lincoln Prairie by Del Webb for Phase One A, Phase One B, Phase Two A and B have also been approved. The petitioner is now requesting a final plat for Phase Three of the Lincoln Prairie by Del Webb. The Phase Three includes the creation of a two-hundred-and-thirty-six lot subdivision with two-hundred-and-twenty-four of those lots being developed for age-restricted, single-family residential. The other lots are being, are, the other lots are a combination of private roads, open space, and stormwater detention facilities. Concurrently with that, the petitioner is also requesting approval of a final plan. Again, this is for Phase Three of Lincoln Prairie, Del Webb subdivision. It's two-hundred-and-twenty-four age-restricted, single-family residents with a gross density of two-point-seven-five for this unit and an overall density of one-point-nine-six. Access is going to be off of Eola Road and via non-mangated access off of Route 30. Like the other phases, the development has been broken down into three series, the scenic, the distinctive, and the echelon lots. And then the building elevations are the same as Phase One and Phase Two. With that, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Basic. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that. Del Webb is going tremendously well, so well that we're ahead of schedule, which unfortunately is usually a good, very good thing. Tonight, the Oswego Village Council will consider a six-hundred housing unit development across the street from this. And we thought this was going to take a little bit longer. So really, this is more so just, probably more so for engineering than, and I'm glad Mr. Schröth is here. We had talked before that we would need to apply gentle pressure to the state to get moving on Route 30. I don't think gentle pressure now is going to be able to do it. If we put in our units on the east side, Oswego puts in six-hundred units on the west side, the two-lane road of Route 30 will not be able to handle the traffic. So, like I said, I don't think gentle pressure will be able to help. We're going to need to reach out to our partners, state reps and state senators, and really put this into motion on getting things down on Route 30, possibly from Treasure to 111th, maybe more so from Hill to 111th, because that really all impacts Aurora, although it's part of, it's unincorporated. But, yeah, we're ahead of schedule and, you know, hopefully the development Oswego will go very, very slow. But you can't, you can't bank on that. We didn't know this was going to go so quickly. So just note that. Ken, if you have any comments, I'd love to hear them.
Good afternoon. Ken Schroth, Director of Public Works and City Engineer. Good point, Alderman. So we, the City of Aurora, when we made the Eola connection, we received the permits through IDOT to make the connection that we made, along with the understanding to widen it to five lanes one day. And as you know, as these developments come through, they will widen it as we go. So I understand Oswego, when they permit on the south side or the west side, they'll end up doing the same thing. So it will be a prime time to talk to them about, to IDOT, about what should be expected along Route 30 in the near future. And as you know, too, Oswego has been working on a Wolf's Crossing corridor improvement from Eola, and we made sure it included our portion of Wolf's Crossing from Route 30 to Eola. So we'll be working with them in conjunction with IDOT as well. So I totally understand your point, and we've got, we're fortunate to have two projects that will be going soon through Oswego and Aurora that will be in front of IDOT to extend that discussion.
Thank you. Yes, I don't want them, of course, to get bogged down on the fact that, oh, we just did Wolf's Crossing, now we have to hold off on Route 30.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
Alderman Lash. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman. Seville. Seville.
Yeah, just a question for, for Ken. When we established Eola Road, we were looking at a connection that was going to be called the Wicker Duke Trail between 80 and 88. Is Oswego going to be continuing that?
Correct. We, before we made our connection of Eola to Route 30, we coordinated with them so that they agreed upon that location. They are to take, per their comp plan, that same cross-section down to what eventually becomes Ridge Road. Ridge Road exists in a two-to-five lane section, all the way from there, all the way to Route Six in Shanahan.
Okay.
So every community's been abiding by that over the decades.
Yeah, good. Well, it's been going on since the early, or the middle eighties, I think.
Yeah.
Glad to see everybody's still keyed into that.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Lash.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. You mentioned an Eola Road entrance into the Del Webb subdivision. Is there a traffic control device planned for that?
Yes, there is. There's a signal at Eola Road in Del Webb Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. No objections, I'm going to send. I'm sorry, no action needed on this side. Appealable only. Next item? I'm sorry, that's it? Vice Chair Bade, let's go on to Chairman Franco. Can you do the Finance Committee report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee met on August 15, 2024, and reviewed the following items. Two-four dash zero five five-five, resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of fifty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and eighty-nine cents from the FY-25 Violent Crime Intelligence Task Force FOIA grant. This will allow APD to reimburse for personnel costs until June of 2025.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Next one is two-four dash zero five five-nine, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the State of Illinois, the execution of a Phase Three Construction Engineering Services Agreement with Thomas Engineering Group, LLC, in the net-to-seed amount of two-hundred-one thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars, and the appropriation of five-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars of MFT funds for the Indian Trail Resurfacing Project. This project funding ratio, as many others are, are an eighty-twenty split, federal to local.
No objections, I'm going to send. I'm sorry, Alderman Seville.
I see we're going to be getting curbing improvements on this section, Indian Trail, is that correct?
Ken Schroth, Public Works Director? Yes, that is true.
And did we look at sidewalks at all?
Portions of, I don't believe the funding can be utilized for that, but we will, if we can, make sure we include that. But I do not believe we can.
At all? On either side?
No, so this is a federal program for resurfacing primarily, and so a lot of the times we work with the states to make, because remember, these are federally funded projects that have to be let through the state. So the state actually gets involved with the improvements. And many times, we get to include with the resurfacing program drainage improvements, like the addition of curb, but addition of sidewalk can't be construed as a drainage improvement. So I doubt we can, but we will look into it.
Okay. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Next one is two-four dash zero five six-zero, a resolution authorizing execution of a joint funding agreement with the State of Illinois, the execution of Phase Three Construction Engineering Services Agreement with Civil Tech Engineering Incorporated, in the net-to-seed amount of one-hundred-sixty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighteen dollars, and the appropriation of four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars of MFT funds for the Ashland Avenue Resurfacing Project. Again, this is an eighty-twenty funding split, federal to local.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Next is two-four dash zero five six-one, a resolution authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the State of Illinois, the execution of Phase Three Construction Engineering Services Agreement with Strand Associates Incorporated, in the net-to-seed amount of ninety-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-ten dollars, and the appropriation of two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars of MFT funds for the Liberty Street Resurfacing Project, another eighty-twenty funding split.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Two-four dash zero five six-two, a resolution authorizing execution of a joint funding agreement with the State of Illinois, the execution of Phase Three Construction Engineering Services Agreement with H.R. Green Incorporated, in the net-to-seed amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-three dollars, and the appropriation of four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars of MFT funds for the Prairie Street Resurfacing Project, another eighty-twenty funding split. Some of the project lies in Sugar Grove Township, and due to an IGA agreement, the township will reimburse the city for their portion at a later date.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Next one is two-four dash zero five six-five, a resolution authorizing the procurement of additional fleet vehicle for the Aurora Police Department in a amount that exceeds sixty thousand dollars, sixty, yes, sixty thousand dollars. The previous public information officer vehicle was reassigned to a command position, hence the need to acquire a new non-police vehicle.
Alderman Lash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did sit through the committee on this, but I'm just curious, is this going to be, since it's not a round-the-clock vehicle, carbon-free option, electric vehicle, given we're paying sixty grand for it?
Good afternoon. Chris Linville, Superintendent of Fleet Operations. We're not sure exactly what the vehicle is going to be yet. We will be getting the most fuel-efficient vehicle that we can that fits the bill for this.
Okay. I'd like to put it on unfinished. I'm going to send a follow-up email.
Unfinished.
And as a side note to that, this is for the net-to-seed amount of sixty thousand dollars, so it may be less than that.
Correct.
Just so, just so we're clear, you guys have looked into vehicles that were electric or fuel-efficient?
Absolutely.
And I expect those vehicles cost a whole heck of a lot more than sixty thousand dollars?
Some kind.
Yeah. So you're going to get the best for the price and the best that's most efficient for the City of Aurora?
That's correct.
Thank you very much. What's the next one?
All right, so that was not unfinished. So the next one is two-four dash zero five seven-eight, a resolution authorizing the city to accept a grant award of one-hundred-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Under a grant agreement between the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, Office of Energy, and the City of Aurora, this grant will allow for the upsizing of one finished water pump at the plant. The grant funding is for ninety percent of the projected costs.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Next one is two-four dash zero five nine-seven, a resolution authorizing the city treasurer to accept on behalf of the city, a donation in the amount of thirty thousand dollars for the Huntington Foundation for the Financial Empowerment Center. This grant is for operational costs, and we have received grants for Huntington now for the past four years.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Next one is two-four dash zero five nine-eight, a resolution authorizing the city to accept an energy-efficient incentive in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars from COMED for energy conservation measures incorporated into the design and construction of the new Public Works facility. As a result of the number of energy-saving measures that the grant will be used for, the city will save approximately thirty thousand dollars annually in energy efficiency.
No objections, I'm sorry. Alderman Lash.
I'm okay with this being on consent. I just had a quick question, and I saw what this grant is going to be used for, but did we also apply for grant funding for other incentives to the state in COMED, COMED specifically for separating the power feeds? Because I know that COMED is providing a lower cost if we have electric vehicles and paying for some of that infrastructure now.
So anybody that can speak is to, have we applied for other grants?
Through COMED or the state?
Ken Schroth, Public Works Director. My apologies, I was talking to a resident. Are we on item number five ninety-eight?
Yes.
Correct.
As far as other COMED grants, so this one, we're very happy with. Like we said, at INT, we didn't even have to change any of our design that would have been required by code, and we still qualified for the grant. So as far as other locations where this could apply, we've worked with facilities before.
Correct. No, for this facility, are we applying for COMED grants to prepare for electric charging?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And to have separate metering? Sorry.
Yes.
So this, for this facility, not for other facilities?
Correct.
And I am thankful that this grant came through.
Correct. We, we're actually working on that as a kind of a template to use at other facilities because we've already secured a grant that allowed us to put conduit in from our main feeds coming into the building to two different locations in our Public Works facility. One, to feed five chargers for our fleet, those will not be metered separately. And then to put five at the front of the building in the public parking lot, those will be metered separately. But before we decide, so that conduit's in, and that will, we get reimbursed for. Next step is to put those chargers in, but before we select a charger, we wanted to make sure everybody was on board with that metering system. So we've worked with purchasing, and IT, and fleet, and facilities to make sure that we're all part of the procurement process to select the vendor that will be bringing those chargers forward.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No objections, I'm going to send. Next item?
The next one is two-four dash zero six zero-one, a resolution authorizing revisions to the Finish Line Grant Program administered by Investaror, and this resolution will allow for the program to have more flexibility to cover prevailing wages, certain types of equipment to be used, and no longer fixed timetable to award the grants.
No objections, I'm going to send.
And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Ken, sir. Chair and Seville, can you give the Public Health, Safety, and Transportation Committee report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The PHS and T Committee was due to meet August 13th, but was canceled for lack of items on the agenda. That's the report, Mayor.
Thank you, Ken, sir. Chairwoman Wani Garza, can you give the Infrastructure and Technology Committee report, please?
Yes, Mayor. We met in August 12th. The first item in the agenda is twenty-four dash oh four two-three, a resolution authorizing the renewal of the upgraded equity program, membership basic and leadership team services for IT, research, and advisory services for Grantner, Inc., for three-year term.
Unfinished. Unfinished.
Twenty-four dash oh five oh three, a resolution authorizing acceptance of the low bid from Light Construction, Inc., to the perform building renovation on the structure located at seven forty-five Aurora Avenue for six-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand, seven-hundred dollars, with a ten percent contingency of sixty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Twenty-four dash oh five oh three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign and execute the license of underground pipelines, cables, and conducts with Wisconsin Central LTD as part of the Kierin Drive water main improvements.
No objections, I'm going to send.
Twenty-four dash oh five eight-four, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to execute an agreement with Leopardo Construction, Inc., of Roman State, Illinois, in the amount of three million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, with ten percent contingency for the construction of three new fire stations.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Bog.
Yeah, can we have a discussion on how this firm was chosen?
Mr. Alexandra.
And Mr. Minnick.
And Mr. Minnick.
Good evening, City Council. Alex Alexandra, Chief Management Officer. I'm joined by Mr. Minnick, our CFO. So happy to answer any questions, Alderman Bog.
He wants to know how this particular company was selected in the process, RFQ, RFP.
So our team comprised of members, you know, the chief and his senior staff, Jim Burchall, Derek Winston from Public Properties, Jolene Coulter, our Director of Purchasing, Chris and myself have been the core team dealing with the design of all three fire stations and also putting this RFQ, or RFP out for construction management. So as sometimes happens, you have people that submit bids that are outstanding on paper and sometimes can get score discrepancies based on the criteria. But like we've always done, the whole time I've been here in these situations, interviews carry a lot of weight, subsequent conversations with bidders, and actually pinning down the respondents to the detail. So what I mean by that is who is going to be the boots-on-the-ground person responsible for the project? What types of tools and technology are they going to utilize to keep the architects and the contractors on task? We know already, these three fire stations are going to cost quite a bit of money. We know that we're in an environment where despite our best efforts and estimates, costs just continue to rise. So it was particularly important that Chris and I, at the beginning, we were going to also throw some scores in, but we decided not to because we wanted to see, to let our team look at it and score. And then we would come in, both of us reviewed all the proposals, the final three, and then we were part of the interview process. So it became abundantly clear, and I apologize, too. I know there's not a lot of detail in the memo, and it was right around the time I was leaving, Chris was on a, at a conference, I think, and so we got some wires crossed. We will put all of this in an amended cover memo prior to City Council. But the bottom line was, just like our experience sometimes, when you look at a dynamic resume or you see an amazing presentation submitted, the proof is actually in the pudding when you actually sit down with people. And so in this instance, all three finalists, very qualified, have track records, but it became readily apparent in the interviews that the Leopardo presentation, the interviews, the responses to the same questions we asked everybody, they just blew the other two away. And there also was a significant decision made that one is a national company, the other was relatively unknown, but came with, they all had good references, but then we had direct experience with the Leopardo team. Leopardo did a great job for the city when they built the current police station. And much like the mentality and thinking that went into the selection of the architects, Corrigan and Clark having the familiarity and being the designers of the police building, similarly, when we had the opportunity, we saw pretty much the same high-quality team from Leopardo, and the differences in approach and scope, that's when we decided to go and recommend Leopardo.
And just to be clear, and I believe council will agree, our job is to choose the what?
The highest, most.
Most responsible bidder.
Correct.
And in your review, and Mr. Minnick's review, Leopardo was the most responsible bidder. Is that correct?
After the full process of evaluation, yes, sir.
All right. You have questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Alderman, yeah. Hold on, let me say it. Let me just say it.
Alderman Barrero.
I have a question. I remember years ago when we were building a couple of stations at the same time, and so a decision was made to, to design them similarly.
Yes, sir.
Kind of achieve efficiencies and all those good things. Are we going to be doing the same thing with these three stations?
We are doing it with two out of the three. So fours is basically the, the new central station that will be part of the police campus. Nine and thirteen are being designed similarly with similar efficiencies, similar products. And so we're, we've already had the discussions with both architects, Corrigan and FGM, about efficiencies, and it's already starting to be reflected in the design. So you will see nine and thirteen very similar, and then you will see fours at the new police fire campus be very similar but distinctive to the existing police building. I think everyone's going to be very, very happy with the design of all three, which we are well on the way. Thank you.
Alderman Lash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that a number of similar questions came up during the committee discussion on this, and I think that's because the, the score for Leopardo is lower of the three that you interviewed.
Agreed.
But I did, I did want to have one more follow-up question that I just thought of during your answer, which is, did we vet all of these for their specific experience involved in fire stations in other municipalities? involved in fire stations in other municipalities?
Yes, we did.
Okay. And I'm assuming they have experience?
They do, all three.
Alderman Buck?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, to follow up on that, of course, I appreciate the fact that you're going to put more information before council. Of course, I don't remember a time when we picked number three, and of course, that jumped out at me. However, since the drop-off is so drastic, I mean, they're more than a hundred points less than number one, and for whatever reason, when we came down to that interviewing, those interviews, and if we knock out one and two, do we, well, first of all, can we get the information of where the rest fell? Because say if number four was at five sixty-four, oh, point less than Leopardo, but we didn't interview them, you know, possibly we struck the two that had the top scores, possibly number four then comes into play. I don't, I don't know, because I don't see it in those interviews. I just get the legislation text. So, yeah, I would definitely like to see where everybody else fell off then, you know, the whole ranking sheet, and if you could share, did we interview number four, whoever that, I don't know who it was?
We did not. So we, we honed it down to the top three, which are indicated in the attachment. But again, we also treat this a bit differently. This is not like they're providing a brick-and-mortar service, this is their professional services.
Oh, yeah.
So we were relying now on the details. So for example, even though they're a hundred points higher, and again, my, you're not going to hear me disparage any of these three, because they're all very qualified firms, and they finished in the top three. However, our team ranked on certain things, and I think some of our team may have forgotten that Leopardo, for example, the city has had significant experience with them, and at that point, the ratings were in, so we said, let's just let it go through, and then we'll deal with things at the interview level. Secondly, when we asked, for example, Core, who got a high score for certain things on paper, the person who basically led the discussion, not a local person at all, he's from a national office, and there was more of a sales orientation than a service orientation. And so when we actually interviewed the person who was going to be the boots-on-the-ground, compared that person to the other two, there was no question in the team's mind who would do the best job. Not that the other folks wouldn't, it's just it became readily apparent. Again, I hate to liken this to a HR-type job interview, but there are certain people who come across fabulously on paper and highly rated, and we were excited to have three high-quality respondents, but it became readily apparent. And because of the amount of money we're talking about spending here, and we are building, the mayor has said this to the team many times, we are building something to last fifty years, and we're building it for short-term efficiencies but long-term value, and this is, these are not three insignificant facilities. One is the, basically, the companion to the main police station in a very high-profile place. And we are, let me remind you, we are moving the EMA, so we are getting extra value from this because, because of our growing police department and the need for space, EMA will be moving now, so we made the decision to move EMA over with the fire department in the new building on the Indian Trail Campus. That will free up, so rather than having to somehow expand the police building, we're using existing space. So we took that into consideration, and that's something that Chris and I brought to the discussion at the interview stage that wasn't necessarily in the scoring. So it's a bit of a nuance here, and again, numbers sometimes jump out, but I just want to implore you, this is not the typical, you know, we're buying supplies for water production, or we're buying, these are professional services that we felt needed that extra effort in the interview process.
Thank you. So, yeah, this is definitely, for unfinished, yeah, if we could just get the scoring all the way out on all the firms, that'd be great.
Unfinished.
Mayor?
Alderman Masia.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Alexander, thank you for your explanation, your opportunity here to explain a little bit further to us situation. At committee level, I brought it up that there was no quantitative analysis for the second part, I was brought up that there was for the first, but in this industry that I'm in as well, that what you just went through here in this process, there is a way to quantitative analyze an interview process as well. So I did bring up that moving forward, it'd be great to see that incorporated into how we proceed with interviewing candidates for positions and adding scores together overall and continue moving forward. So, and of course, because as you said, primarily because of the amount of money that's being spent. So thank you for that, and-
Certainly.
And as I said in the committee as well, especially considering Leopardo's done some work already in the past and has done a good job with building our fire, a police station, should say, years back, a little over a decade ago. I don't think there's a big major problem right now with moving forward or any concerns of any ambiguity with quality of contractor.
Next item?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Was finished, Mayor, was the concluded meeting in that?
Thank you very much. Chairman Warman, can you give the Rules Administration and Procedures Committee a report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Rules Administration and Procedures Committee meeting was scheduled to meet on August sixth, twenty twenty-four. However, there were no items on the agenda, therefore, the meeting was canceled.
Thank you very much. That concludes committee reports. Let's go on to new business. Madam Corrigan, can you read the first item under new business?
Twenty-four zero six one four. A motion authorizing and directing the Chief Human Resources Officer to execute a settlement agreement on behalf of the city and workers' compensation claim. Twenty-two Q zero five I fifty-five ninety twenty-three.
Same old?
Second.
With no objections, I'm going to consent. Next item?
Twenty-four zero six one nine. A resolution granting the advice and consent of the City Council to the mayor's appointment of alderpersons to its standing committees and designation of the chairpersons and vice chairpersons thereof.
Consent?
No objections, I'm going to consent. All right, that concludes new business. Let's go on to Alderman's corner.
This will be the first time that Alderman Tolliver will be presenting. So take it away, brother.
All right. All right, so, yes, welcome to Ward Seven's first Alderman Corner, at least done by myself. So I know we have a heavy agenda tonight, so I'll try to get through this as quickly but efficiently as humanly possible. Wait a minute. There we go. All right, here, so I mean, pretty much essentially speaking, in my time as Alderman, it's been almost a year, not quite yet, but it will be in a few weeks, but I've pretty much focused a lot of my time and my dedication to the community itself. Obviously, getting to know the community, Ward Seven is very large, so there's a lot of areas that I had no idea were even part of the same ward, so that's a lot of what I focused on. So because of my time and when I was appointed, the first real kind of big thing I got to do as far as community was Toys for Tots. So I was able to partner with David Smith and his ARM Foundation. As you can see in the picture, Deputy Mayor Memo came through, and of course, we all know Karina Suarez-Darden, so some great city workers that came through. I got to meet a lot of the families. We held this at the Grand Boulevard Center, also known as the TBOC Center over in Ward Seven, a couple of blocks away from MLK Park, so that was a great event. A lot of families came through, we were able to provide a lot of toys for the kids. All right, secondly, so the first very, very big thing that I got to do was the Easter Egg Extravaganza. This was a perfect way to kind of gauge what the back-to-school bash was going to be like that just happened last weekend, so pretty much a lot of kids came out, we had over five hundred Easter eggs, the kids went wild, we had a lot of food, a lot of music, bouncy houses, the whole nine yards, and there's a quick video that I want to play from that. All right, so that event was a lot of fun. There was, I want to say about at least four hundred people, if not more, that were there to, for my first extravaganza, so that was a really good time, and I was happy that everybody came out to support. Wait a minute, there you go. All right, so the next kind of point, I said, community was pretty much what it was, but community involvement, there's a different, there's a few different points when I say community. So the first one is pretty general. This next one, community involvement, I think it's very important that the community understands what we do, especially when we're keeping things that they like, like the shred events, the cleanups. So this time, I got to luckily join in on the shred event with Alderwoman Wani Garza and Alderman Ted Masiaco. So we did that at East High earlier this year in April. It was my very first one, so it was really good to have some veterans in the field, so I can kind of see exactly how it's supposed to work out, so I thank you guys for including me on that. But I mean, it was just a really good time. People were coming out, I got to meet a lot of Ward Seven residents, we got to see how the whole process worked, and you know, it was just the first time for something like that for me, so I had a really good time doing it. Next up, the Groot cleanup, which everybody in the entire city of Aurora knows about, they love about, they ask us about, it was one of the very first things that people started emailing me about when I came, when I became Alderman, was I going to continue the Groot cleanup. So we definitely did that. I definitely want to say thanks to the crew that came out from Groot, definitely the volunteers, because all of this stuff, like, really, really is not possible without all of them, so kudos to everybody. The residents loved it, the lines were insanely long, we collected about eleven point two tons of cleanup, so definitely something that the community really enjoyed for us doing. And continuation from that, we have what I call the Georgetown Neighborhood Cleanup. So I live in the Georgetown neighborhood, which is ironic because most of it is actually Ward Eight, but there is a portion towards the back, which is Ward Seven, which is the portion in which I live in. However, as most of us know, sometimes when it comes to city versus county stuff, there's a little gray area. So there's this one area right outside of Ogden where we don't really know who owns it or who should be taking care of it, so the neighborhood of Georgetown decided that we would. So we go out there every so often. As you guys can see the before and after pictures, sometimes it gets a little crazy, gets a little hectic, but I'm not opposed to getting out there and sweating with the neighbors and getting my hands dirty and working on machines and equipment that I've never used before in my life, but it was still a good time. So kudos to the Georgetown neighbors for taking part of that as well. Lastly here, community engagement, so this is my favorite part. So much like myself, apparently Ward Seven likes to eat. So I started this initiative online, mostly through Facebook, where I started going to all businesses in Ward Seven. I just really want to promote shopping local, especially in Ward Seven itself, but all these different food places, I started driving up and down Ogden, checking out, that I never really knew about, and I'm finding out from Facebook with the upwards of hundreds of likes on each time I post anything to do with food, that most people don't know about these either, or they're telling me that they've known about them and they were hiding the secret from me. So you know who you are for those of you listening, so I'll remember that, I will remember that. National Night Out, everybody knows about National Night Out, but that was also my first time ever doing something like this. Ward Seven hosted three separate National Night Outs, one of which is in Georgetown, which again is kind of split between seven and eight, but you'll see some of the photos there, it was a really good time. We had one at the TBOC Center, Grand Boulevard, the Greeno neighborhood, which is Georgetown and that kind of Wabonzi Valley High School area, and then we had one on Kane Street as well. So the kids had a great time. We had petting zoos, bookmobiles, lots of food, lots of music, ice cream, it was a really good night. It was a very busy night, but it was a very good night. And although it rained, they didn't keep anybody away, so it was always a good time. And then, secondly here, block parties. So the last two weeks have been very, very, very busy weeks, very busy weeks for Ward Seven. On August tenth, Ward Seven hosted two separate block parties. One is the street that I live on, Brockton Court, that hosted their twenty-third annual block party. It was a really good time, it was myself, and I brought over Kane County Board Member Michelle Gums, I brought her over to DuPage County side and had her judging some rib contests and some bake-offs with me. And in that bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the winner, who won a little over four hundred dollars for winning the rib contest. So it was very contentious, and it was a good time, but contentious in a good way. We have a lot of fun, same kind of thing, lots of music, lots of kids having fun, bouncy houses, the whole nine yards, really good time. Now, what I'm really excited about was the neighborhood of Legacy Fields. Legacy Fields is a neighborhood that's right on the other side of the new public works facility. I've been working very closely with that neighborhood over the last few months, just to make sure that everything that's going on with the facility is going in the right direction and make sure that we're being good neighbors to that neighborhood itself. So I had given them the idea of maybe hosting a block party based off the information and the success that we have on my street. So with the help of some really great neighbors and residents in that area, Kimberly Adams specifically, kind of put a group together. Same type of thing, block party, you know, food, music, splash pads, but the thing that I thought was really, really cool about this one is we brought in a movie, the movie Encanto for the kids to watch. The kids made little boxes and they painted them so they could sit them during the movie, and this is a really short video, but I just thought it was really cool, and I wanted to show this, because you could see all the little kids sitting in their boxes watching the movie itself. There was over sixty-one kids, I believe they said, which was an awesome turnout for them being their first block party. So it was their first one, but hopefully, you know, the first of very, very many to come, and all of them had a good time, they really enjoyed it, and it was a really good time. A busy time to bounce from block party to block party was still a good time nonetheless. And lastly, but surely, now, surely not the least, the back-to-school bash, which just, just happened this weekend, actually about two days ago on Sunday, so I don't have a cool video for this one. However, luckily for me, I inherited a legacy event that has been going on for decades. We made a lot of changes, but it was all for the kids and it all turned out great. So I think we gave over, gave away over four hundred backpacks, toys, prizes, iPads, the whole nine yards. It was a great time, it was supposed to be three hours, I think I was there for five, so it was a great time. Like I said, everybody had fun. It's probably the biggest event that happens in Ward Seven. Kudos to the late Alderwoman Shakita Harburns for starting this, and you know, I continue to plan on, or I plan on continuing this, you know, for as long as I possibly can. And with that being said, that's the end of my Alderman's Corner. Alderman out, thank you.
Great job, Alderman. You're doing great things in, in Ward Seven. All right, let's go on to the next portion of the agenda. We are in need of a closed session under Section 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body and under Section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss litigation. Do I have a motion in a closed session and after, and thereafter adjourn this committee of the whole meeting with no further final action? Has been a motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Madam Clerk, hold the role.
Alderman Ferrero.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza.
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos.
Yes.
Alderman Denal.
Yes.
Alderman Franco.
Yes.
Alderman Seville.
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver.
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Bug.
Yes.
Alderwoman Bede.
Yes.
Alderman Lash.
Yes.
Alderman Warman.
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. This meeting will hereby adjourn up on the conclusion of the closed session. Thank you very much.